Awesome. Good evening, everyone. If everyone rise for the public hearing. It's okay. Thank you, everyone, for coming out this evening. Our first order of business is a public hearing. I'm juggling between different computers and devices with all night things here. So our first one is the public is a public hearing regarding Nature's Miracle LLC located at 161 in Gunkwood Road. There are two active applications for this business. One is for medical cannabis registered caregiver new cultivation. And the other is for medical cannabis registered caregiver, uh, medical caregiver retail store. I want to provide a little bit of background on this before we go ahead and open up to public comment. In May of 2023, the town council amended chapter 140 dash 67 dot three. Performance standards and local licensing requirements for medical cannabis registered caregivers. And that was enacted as I said in May of 2023. And that is essentially why we are here this evening. This is the first, if I remember correctly, the first medical cannabis business that is going through this process and the first public hearing of this nature. I'm going to lay out the ground rules and I'll open it to the public. If anyone did not sign in that would like to speak, there's been, there's few people here who's calling you. And then we've got several emails and phone calls that we've also received. And depending on the sentiment that I hear from the evening, I will either read everyone's email or beta. Or I will just say, we also heard from this person who is in favor or not standing above the business. All right, I think that is it. Is there any other color that anybody would like to add before we get started?
Rules of the public hearing.
Thank you. Rules of the public hearing. Each person will be given three minutes to speak. We will use a timer. And we'll give everybody one opportunity to speak and then if they will attempt again, we'll do the second round if necessary. I think also important is the applicant is not present at the moment. So we can go ahead and get started. So number one, that's Steve Bayes.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Councillors. I'm Steve Bayes. I live at 1.
See your name and address for everyone.
I'm Steve Bayes. I live at 160 Gunkwood Road with my wife Leslie and teenage son. We are a butters of 161 Gunkwood Road. As we're given limited time, if there's something, a concern I don't mention that other people do, please don't interpret that as me not sharing that same concern. We purchased our home in 2010 when we purchased seven acres in a rural residential zone. Prior to purchasing, some of the attributes we considered were the minimum lot size and the land uses in the R five zone. My neighbors and I have been asking the town to address 161 Gunkwood Road since 2017. It was at that, in that timeframe that his cultivation operations began expanding and it immediately became a nuisance. As you are well aware, over the past seven years, we have been in contact with the various town managers, town councillors, CEOs and planning board members. In an attempt to understand how it had been allowed and why there had never been any enforcement of the ordinances related to the continued expansion of his cultivation and then the retail store. Concerns I had with the application itself, per the performance standards of the retail stores, for the caregiver retail stores. Most retail stores have to go through a site plan review with a planning board. Obviously, the store already exists. So we're skipping that, but just to, to understand that other stores have to go through that planning board site review process. It also says the applicant must provide evidence to the council of all land use approvals, including builder, building permits. None of that documentation was provided with the application. No licenses should be granted until the police chief, fire chief and code enforcement officer have all made positive statements regarding the application applicant's ability to comply with town ordinances or state or federal law. No recommendations were included from the CEO or the police chief. I'll let the submitted police log for the property speak for itself. Concerning the retail store, I strongly oppose the town council considering or approving a license for the retail store. Per our land use tables, no retail is allowed in the R five residential zone. The retail store was opened in 2020. The property file contains no records of building permits or change of use documentation. In December 2020, I first understood what was going on at the property, reached out to manager Ellsworth at the time and the town council. Manager Ellsworth replied stating, we met yesterday with Eric, who's Mr. Bergendahl, and explained that his storefront as such is not legal. As a caregiver, he is allowed to dispense to his clients but cannot have a sign or other paraphernalia. It continued storefronts are not allowed in that zone. The council may hear tonight, and some of you may have been led to believe that the retail store is grandfathered. State law is clear and only allows for registered caregivers who are operating a retail store with local approval prior to December 13th, 2018. The state defines what local approval is. The retail store at 161 did not exist in December 2018. In the fall of 18, Mr. Bergendahl was still trying to open a storefront in North Berwick. Again, the retail store at 161 did not start operation until the spring of 2020 in the residential R five zone with no town approval. The care. I will finish up later. Thank you. The caregiver operation, I am strongly opposed to the town council considering or approving a license for the caregiver operation. In October 2022, two of his cultivations had burned. In December 23, 2023, Mr. Bergendahl, without an active building permit, began construction on a much larger 66 by 24 foot two-story building. In just two months, any claim he may have to restore that non-conforming use has expired. There's a two-year limit in our ordinances. However, I believe that if he is ever to finish, be able to finish that building and based on his history, he will ignore the limits of our caregiver performance standards and begin cultivation in that new building as well, whether the town approves it or not. Per the standards, authorized municipal officials have the authority to enter the applicant's premises without notice to make inspection reasonably necessary to ensure compliance. I would recommend that the town have the fire chief, chief of police and the CEO meet at Nature's Miracle tomorrow morning to inspect the buildings on the property and to determine what the square footage of his current operations are. That allows the town to draw a line in the sand instead of baseline of where he's at now in compared to what you might consider for his license. Our performance standard states a max of 700 square feet. I believe that he may already be exceeding that. There is a significant number of liens on the property, approximately 20, 200,000 to the federal government, 145,000 mechanic lien to a local contractor and approximately 3,000 to the state department of labor. Should the council consider approval of a caregiver license, I strongly recommend including as a condition a performance guarantee bond, as the value of this property is probably no more than these liens on it. Who is going to clean up this mess if Mr. Bergendahl just walks away? For seven years now, the cannabis operations at 161 have had a significant negative impact on the enjoyment of our property and our investment in South Berwick. The pride I once had of being a South Berwick resident has long been exhausted. I request this council start tonight to once again include the R five zone as part of South Berwick. Do not accept or license what is clearly not allowed and ensure that the town is adequately prepared to monitor and enforce what you do allow or license. Thank you. Do you have any questions for me? Thank you.
Take off. So you got your next one. Great. I'm going to do Pat Robinson.
Pat Robinson, Fretle Street. I certainly can't follow him very well. He, he did that eloquently. I just want to say, I, I live on the other side of town from him, so it doesn't affect me personally. But I do drive down a concrete road occasionally at, you know, at night. And I've always wondered, why is it open until midnight? No store is ever open till midnight, which means, you know, just driving down these rural roads, perhaps after ingesting marijuana to affect their guilt. Thank you.
Tamara Steinhauer, 19 Hill Drive. I guess I don't understand why, if it's, if he's technically not grandfathered in and he's in a zone that doesn't allow this, why are we talking about whether or not it should be allowed? So I think it should not be allowed.
Paul Steinhauer, 19 Hill Drive. While I am not in the butter, excuse me, I have some concerns on this particular application. It's not only controversial, controversial, the applicant himself, but as you said, as, as chair, that it's the first time we're going through this process. So very clearly, as a past chair of the South Berwick Planning Board, we live and die by table A, land use. What this applicant is applying for, I don't see it as applicable land uses according to table A. If it has been grandfathered, let's see the legal document for that. The council, in my opinion, has no legal standing in giving this permit unless you have legal documented proof that it is grandfathered. And even if it was grandfathered, it could be a caregiver and/or a retail store. But I also see in the documentation that it says new, new cultivation. That is new. That is not grandfathered and that is only allowed in the industrial zone. Furthermore, as I said before, I am not in the butter, but for performance standards, hours of operation, I feel horrible for any butters along that road. Who will enforce the performance standards from eight in the morning to six at night or something reasonable? Anything after 10 or 12 at night is not unreasonable. It is unreasonable. So while I am not anti-business, I am not anti-marijuana. I am for enforcement of current documented land use ordinance in the town of South Berwick. And my fear is that if you go along with this without the appropriate documentation about any kind of grandfathering, you will be creating a very slippery slope and dangerous areas for setting a precedent for which you probably don't want to go into. Thank you.
Thanks, Dick Crowley.
Good evening. My name is Dick Crowley. I live at 11 William Road. Good. Thank you for giving the time to speak to the council during public session. I would like to ask that both licenses discussed being tonight be denied. The reason I think they should be denied are, one, to me, there is no need or shortage of medical cannabis stores in the area. Elliot, Kittery, Berwick, Saltwood all have medical marijuana stores. I don't believe any hardship is placed on anyone trying to get access to medical marijuana, should this be denied. The town, we lost the town's only pharmacy and it doesn't seem to be a concern about driving one, two towns over to get prescriptions. Why do we need another medical marijuana, medical cannabis store where we can survive without any pharmacy at all? In June of 2021, the population overwhelmingly rejected citizens initiative to allow expansion of cannabis businesses in South Berwick. I think that the council should listen to what the town's population said in response to those two initiatives. I have lived in South Berwick for almost 30 years. One of the reasons that we chose to move to South Berwick was the atmosphere that exists in the neighborhoods. I think that allowing a business to build anywhere they want without regard for any zoning law, and this is any type of business, will degrade the quality of life that the town offers and reduce the value of the property of people that are adjacent to such businesses. I don't think that's fair. I especially don't want a neighbor running a business open till midnight. I am concerned that allowing a business to establish themselves without regard for zoning laws could set a precedents for other businesses trying to do the same thing. So in conclusion, I encourage you to deny both applications because I don't think there's a need for more cannabis stores. The townspeople did speak about their feelings during the citizens initiatives. It degrades quality of life for people. I don't live next door, but if someone opened a business next to me, I would have the same type of problem and it will set a bad precedent. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Nancy Crowley.
I have Nancy Crowley at 11 William Road. I have nothing new to add because everyone has brought forth a lot of problems and issues with it. I agree with every one of them. Lights on till midnight, seven days a week. I can't imagine living next door to that and being in a residential area, having a business beside me. No matter what the business is, I wouldn't be happy with it. I think you need to follow the rules. The laws are there. And I think they need to go back and look and see what was done without any approvals or permits. And reconsider that. So I'm against it. Thank you.
Last, I'm assigned with Mark Zimmer.
Mark Zimmer, 72 Vine Street. You're supportive Steve Bayes. I'm against this license. I feel that I would echo most of what he said, if not all of it, and I think that it would devalue his property. I would be pretty upset if it was my property. And, and the part I don't understand is if there's a, if these, if there's statutes that are, are there to protect him and zoning laws, why it's slipped through, I guess that's being resolved now, but it's about all I have to say. I just hope that you guys know what the story is and know where it's going to go and do the right thing. Thank you.
All right, I'm done with my time. We did have a few additional people join. If there's anyone who's canon late that would like to speak as part of the public hearing. It's a good opportunity to. Okay, I will just quickly then summarize. So over the past several days, we published the public hearing date the council has heard from several other residents who weren't able to make it this evening. We received a phone call from Mary Ann Minor in opposition. She lives at 14 Peach Road in opposition of both licenses. Also from Scott Landis located at AF 80 Academy Street in opposition of both of next Bill Thomas and Jane Hallfield, both located at 151 Gunkwood Road. Again, in summarizing here, but in opposition to both licenses. Next, we have Jessica Thier, who still owns the property in South Berwick. And she expressed similar concerns as well. She's located at 37 Academy Street. Next, we have Alaria Zinzer, who was at Backeaters Lane. I don't have her house number, but I know for certain she does live on Backeaters Lane. I'm also in opposition of both licenses. And finally, the downer is located at 132 Belmont Road in opposition. And lastly, Stephanie Anser at the worst address. 576 Unraised Bridge Road, also in opposition. So I have these, I'll give you to read into the record. I wanted to make sure everyone was aware that those came in as well. One last chance before we close this public hearing. Anyone else? Go ahead.
Hi, thank you. I'm Mary Breen, Old County Road, 52 Old County Road. I've lived there for 31 years and I just want to support everyone else here who is in opposition to both applications. This is our five zoning and there's no room for this kind of business. And I'm still not clear why he's allowed to have a retail shop open till midnight on a windy country road in South Berwick. But I just want to support everybody else's comments. Thank you for the time.
Yes, thank you. Any other takers? Okay, it is 6:19. We will go ahead and close the public hearing for the evening and we'll shift over to our board of assessors meeting. So just a reminder, the town council is also the board of assessors and every August we have the fun activity of setting the fiscal tax rate. So our first order of business to go through and do that. So in our supporting documents, we have, for anyone who has given them, we have a one page very colorful with lots of charts that lays out the different scenarios that are available to us. And I'm going to look to town manager and manager. Is there any explanation you all would like to share on that before we?
So we presented the council, the board of assessors. After we have, after the town passed the budget, match new growth and the assessment, assessment review, we combined all that and here it goes. Impact to the homeowner as well as the cost or what it would pay to mill rate, mill rate and the tax rate. Age, mill rate, mill rate and the tax rate set by the town, by the town board of assessors. We provide the chart, the state law, the state tax calculation formula. Will allow us, right now, we're currently at thirteen ninety-six. Uh. We can go from set the mill rate with the revenues that we had, the cost of school, county tax. The budget, we can set the mill rate anywhere from thirteen twenty to thirteen eighty cents. In doing so, looking at. A potential where we're going through the reval right now. We use the overlay for. Um. Mean the overlay for funding. Three. Refunding of abatements. I myself and the assistant town agent and the assessor got together. We determined that we recommend and field at this point. Um, thirteen twenty-two mill rate, which can be almost a fifty cent drop, which will be applicable for this year, which will leave us. About three hundred thousand. The overlay for potential abatements. When I did this in the previous. Reval and the like that I worked in, the two years after we did that, and one year we had sixty-eight abatements, and the year following, we had about fifty-five. So the abatements is definitely increased because obviously people have town deals with. The new evaluation on that problem. So we're going into that time, we're going into twenty-six and twenty-seven. Um, starting next year when the reeval is done, so. My recommendation is thirteen forty-three.
Okay, thank you, Tim. Um, the council, do you have any questions on that suggestion? I'm just gonna kind of restate Tim, as you said, so everyone's super clear. So, uh, as many people know, I'm sure we are in the process of doing our entire reevaluation of our entire town. Going to change from people's property values. And so because of that, we do expect that there's going to be a larger number of people requesting tax abatement. Um, due to the reevaluation. So we're kind of proactively planning ahead for that to make sure that we've got some extra money set aside for those payments that we expect to put in. Um, and then additionally, I think this is the third or fourth year in a row that we've actually lowered. P S. With the mill rate. All the five years been been a part of this process. It's always gone down. Yeah, we but we've been consistently lowering the mill rate year over year for the past several years. And that doesn't always equate to a lower tax bill for everybody, unfortunately, because part of the math game of taking it from your property value as well as the tax rate. Um, but I think we just continue to manage this town financially extremely well and um set ourselves up for success. So and I think this is another example of working ahead and putting money aside to anticipate those end of payments that most likely will come in. I'm on board with the recommendation of the town manager. Is there any other um discussion, suggestion? Okay, I will go ahead and make a motion to set the tax rate for February. Point four. Twenty-four, I think, February twenty-four, twenty-five at thirteen point four two.
Second.
We have a motion and a second and another discussion. All those in favor say aye. Uh, we'll do a roll call vote, Jeff.
Aye.
Linda, aye, John.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes for zero. Thank you, everyone. Uh, and then what generally follows after we set the tax rate is the uh signing your county assessors return. This is a very um. Certain annual administrative path. Uh, so I'll go ahead and make a motion to sign your counties' assessors return for February twenty-four, twenty-five.
Second.
We have a motion and a second and the discussion. Okay, or say aye, John.
Aye.
Linda, aye, John.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes for zero. All right, um, six twenty-five, that wraps up our board of assessors meeting, and I'll run to the official town council meeting. Uh, we have four councillors present. Um. We only have four councillors now. Um.
Uh, Jeff.
Yes.
Fine work. Have to make a motion and go to the session meeting and.
Thank you very much. I will go ahead and make a motion to close the assessors meeting at six twenty-five. Yeah.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor, Jeff. Linda, uh, John.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for the reminder, Tim. Um, okay, roll call, call order. Uh, we have four councillors present. I will also do a shameless plug here. We have four councillors present. We have one seat open that is up for election in November. We need another council. Um. And we thank Jessica Thier very, very, very much for her service, and we wish her the best of luck. She's here as manager. Uh, okay, moving on, approval of the following minutes um from our town council meeting on uh July. Any edits to these minutes from anyone?
Madam Chair, who you sent to town council meeting minutes from July twenty-third, twenty twenty-four is written.
Second, thank you. Your motion in a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye, Jeff.
Aye.
Linda, aye, John.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes for zero. And our last minute, our next seven minutes is for the public hearing from last week on uh August sixth regarding town hall. Uh, any edits to these? Um, I'll go ahead and make a motion to sign that or adopt the minutes from the public hearing on August sixth, two thousand twenty-four. As written.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. One point that I would like to add is that uh for the public hearing last week, we did also receive a decent number of email communication. That has been posted to the town hall project page with one file there that consolidates all of those emails. I think down the front page, there's like a summary of all the people. So um in addition to the minutes here on the town, on town hall, we also heard a lot from folks. All right, um, that's three minutes, and we'll go to the treasurer's warrant. Um, yes. Good enough. Thank you. Uh, all those in favor of signing these minutes from the public hearing on August sixth, say aye. Jeff, aye, Linda.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes for zero. What would I do in my opinion? Um, okay, now we're onto the treasurer's warrant. We have two warrants because we're still kind of in the um fiscal year transition phase with the fiscal year briefly closing. So the first warrant, I'm assuming the smaller one is for prior fiscal year. So the first warrant is, um, I'll make a motion to set a treasurer's warrant in amount of one hundred fifty, twenty-six thousand, one hundred and five dollars and seventy-two cents from August eighth, two thousand twenty-four. I have a second.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor signing this treasurer's warrant, say aye. Jeff, aye, Linda.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes for zero. And then next we have the larger one for this current fiscal year. I'll make a motion to sign the treasurer's warrant dated August ninth, two thousand twenty, twenty, two thousand, two thousand twenty-four. In the amount of one million, thirty-six thousand, one hundred and seventy-four dollars and eighty cents.
Second.
Thank you. Motion and a second. Um, I will point out that this does, this warrant does include. The school payment, which is now at eight hundred and thirty thousand, two hundred and thirty-four dollars. All those in favor signing the treasurer's warrant, say aye. John, Jeff.
Aye.
Linda.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes for zero. All right, um, next order of business before the presentation, we're looking to have um Eric Dan here from Sweetser. And also just want to point out, um, we just have a minor typo on our agenda. We have a specific liaison here in Pennsylvania.
Thank you. I thought that was a really funny new title.
We can hit your name tag.
Uh, so my name is Erin McGann. I am with Sweetser and I'm with the options program. The options program is a substance use risk reduction program. And one of the ways we reduce risk is with Narcan, which I gave all of you um a box here this evening, and I'm going to give you a two-minute training. It probably lasts less than two minutes. And then I'm gonna um thank Chief Ruger very much for bringing me on um to the department. So Narcan is used for when anybody is overdosing on any kind of opiate. Um, opiates are things like oxycodone, fentanyl, um hydrocodone, so they can be prescribed by your doctor. It can be something that your pets or your kids can get into, and Narcan is completely safe for use on anybody. So as soon as you realize that somebody has maybe having an um an overdose, you're gonna want to open up that box, and there's a little plastic thing in there. You tear that open. And you're gonna pull out something that looks like this. Looks exactly like this, actually. And you're gonna take this and you're gonna stuff it as far up their nose as you can, right? So you might have to work it up there as far as you can, and you're gonna push the little plunger. You'll hear a little click. Don't worry, I clean these off after every time I use it. Um, you're gonna hear a little click, and that means that the stuff has gone up their nose. You're gonna call nine-one-one right then, okay? And after you call nine-one-one, if they're not responding, I want you to open up the other bottle and stick it up their other nostril and do another shot up there. What this does is it stops the opiate receptors in your brain from accepting any more opiates. So it stops any overdoses in its track. It does wear off after thirty minutes, though, and if there's still opiates in somebody's system, they can re-overdose. So we want to make sure that nine-one-one gets there um and, you know, helps them through this all the way. Luckily, since I have been an options liaison um in South Berwick, we have not had to use any Narcan. But I am currently the supplier of all the Narcan for all the police departments in Southern Maine because. It's a requirement that all police departments and police officers carry this on them. And they don't necessarily have the funds to buy it themselves, and for whatever reason, the state's not supplying it. So it's me. I'm the pusher of Narcan. And I want to thank Chief Ruger very, very much for lobbying with Sweetser to have a liaison here in the town. So my office is at the police department. I help people with mental health problems. I help people with substance abuse problems. I really help people with pretty much anything they want to talk about. So if any of y'all want to just call me, you can. Um, but I will, my, my goal is to divert people from going into crisis. So I am trained as a crisis. I worked mobile crisis before I did options. I can do crisis assessments. I can help people get inpatient hospitalization if that's what they need. My goal is to get people before they get to that point, before they get to the point of overdosing, before they get to the point of needing hospitalization. I am not an um a counselor. I'm not a licensed counselor, although I am going to school for it. Um, but I can help you find a licensed counselor. I can help you get services. I can help you figure out what your next steps are. If you don't want, if you come to me and you're drinking too much and you don't want to quit drinking, that's fine with me. We're gonna have a conversation on how you can reduce that risk. Maybe you only drink at home. So that you're not out driving. Um, same thing with if you're using any kind of drugs or even smoking. I can help you with all of those things. And again, it's all about risk reduction for me. I do not judge anybody. You are, just accept you how you are. Um, I'm like a better, better formula of your family. Like, if you want to come in your jammies to the police department, come in your jammies. We can do that. Um, but Chief Ruger did lobby. Um, you guys do not pay for this service um throughout of the town budget at all. It is paid for from Sweetser funds. I am an employee of Sweetser, so please come and use my services. Um, I have business cards here. You all have business cards. Um, if anybody who's listening on. Zoom or TV or whatever we're on, um, doesn't know how to get in touch with me, you can call the police department and they can give you my phone number. Although I'm housed there, I'm really not there that often because I try to be out in the community, talking to people, seeing what is out there, seeing what kind of services people need. If anybody does want to have a Narcan training at their office, at their senior center, at their gym. You know, with their knitting group, whatever, just give me a holler because I will do that as well. Um, again, my goal is just risk reduction and getting the word about my, my position and about the things I can offer out into the community is my entire goal here. Well, thank you so much for your time tonight. I know you guys are really, really busy. Does anybody have any questions?
No, but thank you for what you've done.
Thank you.
Great things already from you.
Thank you. I'll give you that twenty bucks later. Thank you. Thank you so much, and thank you all for letting me speak tonight.
Yes, thank you for coming. Okay, um, all right, we're gonna move on to public comments. Um, so this time is for um any items that are not on the agenda. I just want to remind everybody that public comment is um. We're, I need to get each person to state their name and address. It's a free one to three minutes. All speakers will follow the rules of common etiquette, including refrain from vulgar or abusive language, yelling, arguing, or disrespectful behavior. Comments or complaints against employees, elected officials will not be allowed. I have a gamble. I won't use it. Who would like to come up and speak for public comments? Anyone? Okay. All right, we'll move on. I'm finished with this then. Um, number one, the town hall project. Um, so just to recap, we did have a public hearing last week on Tuesday. We had another public hearing uh well over a year ago in June. Um, regarding this building. Um, we have uh been working really closely with Oak Point and Lassol Architects to come up with a plan for this building that was presented. Last week to the public. Um, you'll see these fancy boards here if you want to get the details on um what the layout will look like and budget as well. Uh, we heard from several people at the public hearing last week, and as I mentioned before, we also heard from several additional votes uh via email. Um. And if I am remembering correctly, every single one of those comments was in full support of renovating this building, including the nice-to-have. I think you had one or two who were um, one or two folks who were more in favor of just doing the base projects, so not doing the nice-to-have. And we didn't have one person who was more in favor of building it. Um, that is the general sentiment from everyone, and I think. I'll point out is that I think a lot of the emails in particular that we were seeing from folks. Were kind of like very short and sweet to the point of like, hey, we love it. The building, the plan is great, but you want to say even more so. We appreciate the process and the transparency and how we went about doing this. And so I just want to say before we take any action, I'm just really proud of the council and the staff and how we have conducted this project and how we got where we're at now. Um, it seems like most of the residents are very happy that we listened and pivoted and made a change and took a different path. And I'm just really proud of us for getting to the meeting. Um. So that kind of summarizes the results of the planning, sorry, public hearing. Um, I'm curious, council, do you guys have any other thoughts or anything you want to add after the public hearing? Hearing.
So after the emails, after the public hearing, I mean, we'll, yeah, I can, sorry. Um, so after the public hearing and emails we received. I'm still with the adage of it's cheaper to do it while we have it and it's being done. So I'm good with the nice-to-have because they get it cheaper while they're here than having to back in two years and finish it, so. I'm good.
Any other comments or comments?
I don't have too much to add. I think I'm gonna say Tim is what. Wrong. Jeff. All right.
Given that, I think that we're um, we set ourselves up well. Uh, I'll go ahead and make a motion to go ahead and um. I'll make a motion to go ahead and move forward with the plans as presented by Oak Point and Lassol Architects um over the past week, the past two weeks, including the nice-to-have as our um. Go-forward plan for the town hall.
Right.
Thank you. Give everyone a motion. And a second. Any other? I will just add, so I know that um, I just want to talk about the process real quick before we go, and I will remember to read the votes. Um, is that. We have kind of left this decision and how this decision would actually happen a little bit open-ended based on public input. And so I know, and Tamara in particular, you had questions in the past, and kind of how does this decision happen? And so um, I think. Given the public input that we received, the town, the town council clearly feels comfortable kind of saying, okay, we understand the public feels in terms of what we want to do with this project. So we are making a decision with the motion we just made to say, this is our plan. We are going to renovate. And then jumping ahead a little bit, but I think our next motion after this one would be to make a motion to go with our attorney to make sure that we get the language correct. So we can put um language on the ballot in November to fund this project. So that will most likely be our next course of action. It's for the clarify that open. Um, so we have a motion and a second on the table. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye, Jeff.
Aye.
Linda.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes for zero. And our next order of business, uh, I will say is to um make a motion to authorize the town manager and the county attorney to draft. Language for the ballot in November to fund the project that we will review at our next meeting.
Second.
Discussion.
You're, oh, hang on. In that motion.
Yes.
You should put. You need to put it all.
Oh, okay, thank you.
So you'll need to, one of those motions needs to have it all. So we present that. Let me just give it.
What is it? Does it even have the super specific dollar in front of that?
Great pin behind Diane on the board.
Oh, thank you, right. The green.
Can you grab that, bring that over?
I think seven, something two, three. Yes. All right, I'll end that last motion. I'll make a motion to authorize the town manager to work with the town attorney to draft language um for the November fifth ballot in order to fund the project. Um, and the activated amount of seven million, three hundred and one thousand dollars.
Second.
Any use of that? Ken, is that good?
Yep, okay.
All right, all those in favor? Yeah. Uh, just for clarity purposes. Uh, in this process, um, with what we received from uh Oak Point and Lassol. Um. We asked, we tested. Now that does not guarantee that they will get the work correct, and there still is a possibility that we could set this out to bid and it could actually be cheaper. Is that a possibility? Yes, yeah, okay. Just wanted to. I mean, I think that that was our experience with the police station. I think we came in well in our budget on the police station, right? We did.
So next step in the process would be for us to grab. So next step in the process would be for us to grab the warrant question with the attorney, present that to you with the next council meeting, which you would have to vote and prove to put on the warrant ballot in November. Then it goes about half November. Then from there, the next decision would be your decision to decide what to do next. Whether you continue with Oak Point and the process you have, or scrap that, start all over again with the 7.5 million, redesign it, do it all over again, invest that money, do, or hire a new architect. Whatever. The next step would be to get someone to, you know, hire an architect to design the project. That will be formal. But that, then they, what they designed the project. Because these are, these are conceptual designs, right? We need to have, they'll need to hire an architectural firm based either on this project or whatever else you want. And so now we have 7.5 million to stand, to line this. And if they're the old point, like you said, you could open it up to somebody else to choose. If you don't choose Oak Point, then they design the project, then they take that, they put that, they'll put that up bid sometime in the spring for construction contractors to bid on it and see what they get back for, for bid and negotiation and so forth. Then again, you will kind of representative of the citizen of the town, you'll have the votes, two, you'll have three or four, you know, contractors who will spend prices. We'll have choice to choose this, 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 this. And then they'll award that and we begin the process.
Right. We have a motion on the table. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Jeff?
Aye.
Linda?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes for zero. I think that takes care of the town hall project item for this evening. Thank you, everyone who participated in this, in this effort, who gave, submitted feedback in the public hearing and sent emails. Um, we just really appreciate all of the input and, and, um, participation for this evening. Uh, up next is number two. I'm interested in how we have a plan update. Um, is this? You call or you?
Thank you.
Yeah.
So just, you see the information I sent you. Basically, our plan has been accepted by the, by the, by our local conservation authority. Um, they reviewed the plan. Plan is completely consistent. I also see that in their letter, they're making some recommendations. So myself and Jen and Paul Matt, um, Paul's going to take the lead on this. He'll, um, be meeting with Reagan Young from S and P D C. They'll be looking at the recommendation. Paul's changing very minor. Some of them are just words. Others could be a spelling stop and things. They're going to look at which ones they want to change and put in, um, get that drafted, get, put that in the plan. Once that's completed, we, the administration will be presenting the plan to the council sometime in September for formal document. The public hearing.
We'll just have to go back to the state. I will, we'll make the revision. Can I go back or no?
No, we're not. This is the passage and the, the changes that they're recommending and so on, or they just, there's injections.
Got it. Okay. Um, so it seems like, um, we're just set out, we're getting there with the closing out program.
I just, and I, I want to thank the people who did that project. That was very, upper hand plan, a lot of work, a lot of effort, a lot of moving pieces. And I want to thank everybody who did that. I know she's not here now. She's certainly about this. But Jessica said I had a lot to do with that. She put a lot of hours into that. So I just want to make that known. Upper hand plan, a lot of work. It's tough to follow plan, which, uh, I wouldn't get that out of my way. So, but I just wanted to thank all the that I had done.
Absolutely. All right. That was an interim only items on our action for us. Uh, so we'll go ahead and move on to number three, um, for Action for Gradations Miracle, L L E, one thing you want to go for road, um, regarding the public hearing that just took place. So now that we've got a public hearing on, um, these two lights application, now it's up to the council, um, for us to determine whether we want to go from here. Would anyone like to get us started?
So to start with getting when I got here, I was informed that 161 Agunka Road was grandfathered and has a medical marijuana caregiver business by previous court officer. He had stated that that was because that business was an operation in March of May of 2016, I think. And that at the time, state wanted to take back to 2018. That's how that was granted. As far as retail business, I have looked at, I received complaints from um, the voters as well as citizens. So I started to do research. I've been researching for the last six months. I've read all previous council minutes I could get to, to see and read. I've read the planning board minutes. I've looked at documents. The research, the file, myself and Jen researched all the old minutes, all the way back to as far as I can go back. I can't find a formal document authorizing the retail business. Uh, by 161, I'm not saying that it's a lot or it's not a lot. I just can't find anything. In the town ordinance and town code, when you sort of, you would have to, in order to have a retail establishment in our five, there's no such thing as grandfather. That retail establishment would have to be approved by some board of some authorization law. Either the planning board, the town council through non-conforming law. I also had the court officer, do the same, some of the same research. And she said, I just have the same, I think the same issue. That we were unable to find any documentation. Does mean it doesn't exist and I don't have, I just can't find anything. The spirit of doing the honest and open to the citizens, both for and against us. Um, I can't find any documentation, but everybody will. The only thing I did find is a reference to document from 2017 where time Joe would sell rightnesses was in the file. He's gotten a complaint of Mr. Burgendahl spending his operations out of marijuana growing. I saw him, I spoke with Eric's brother and his wife, Christian. I asked if Eric was home. They explained if he was working. I told him I was there and he told me that, that, that did not happen. I don't, I mean, the only thing they'd done was put in heat pumps and the heat and air conditioner. They said they would not only go through the house without Eric. I agreed. They didn't say nothing has gone, gone in the new building. And I'm very delighted to services will. So that was in the file. The only other thing that I was able to come across was the email that was today's reference that I put in your packet with talks about previous down end for meeting with Eric Burgendahl telling him that he could not store and assign and not allow in that mission. Also, you'll find in the packet, which is not a reference from the police chief. She could say that I've seen on that itself. So we'll have them do that. I, at this point, have just want to tell all of that. I have researched all that I can find and everything I have presented to the council. There could be other documents out there, but through everything I have searched myself, it's a town manager, current code enforcement officer, the current bar, previous square, we have not been able to find. I have searched up and down for three documents that would show either allowing business rebuilds in our files or a grandfather business in our files. And I, at this point, have not been able to find. Jay, Paul, any, agree with that?
Yep. Did you want to, was Chief Ruger even saying, and you made it seem like we're in front of the seat?
Well, I'd like to have Chief speak on the number, um, one of the chief was required to present something on this license and I don't believe you did.
Yeah, go ahead. Thank you.
Yeah, I did not do a write up on that 161 Agunka Road. Uh, looking at the different past history, I did a study on every medical marijuana establishment in this town. Um, and as you guys have posted, there is just a multiple, multiple, multiple calls to 161 Agunka Road. The other three, easygoing cannabis had literally three calls for service, uh, but they weren't about the establishment. Wisely cannabis, cannabis had two, uh, but they weren't, one was an alarm call and one was just an animal complaint. So it did not involve wisely cannabis. The other one pied cow. There was four calls for service. It was two alarms and just a, uh, three alarms, I'm sorry. And a follow-up that did not have to do with the business itself, but with the building of another tenant. So at this point, I also looked into state law and as far as running a medical marijuana establishment, you cannot sell retail out of the same building. That's why if you look at Kind Farms, they have two separate buildings. That's what I have to say.
Thank you. Bye.
Also, also Madam Chair, our attorney, Cole Ozier, if we have any questions, please.
Great. Mr. Burgendahl, I know that you were not able to hear, where you were a little late for the public hearing. I would like to hear your opinion. There's something you would like to share. At the end. Is it?
Any questions?
You guys don't know my.
Yes. We want to make sure everything gets picked up on our party.
Yeah, thanks. All right. So what was the?
Sorry, you introduce yourself.
Chief, what?
You just introduced yourself.
Eric Burgendahl. Thank you. Chief, 161 Agunka Road, South Hurwicke. Chief, what were you referring to about the amount of calls? Right, so could that, could that relate to the problem?
Sorry.
Was it, could that relate to the problem that I was having with the? Alarm service?
It's a regard, we have a corner order.
Oh, okay.
Corner order. I'll come to you, go to that chair.
Yes. If you could direct your comments towards me, send them to me. I don't want to switch to the.
I was curious what he was citing about the amount of calls.
Yeah. So he included in the packet and could refer to the public hearing is three pages of all of the calls that have been made at 161 Agunka Road over, back to 2013, I was like.
Right. And that was because I was having a problem with the alarm system.
I, well, it's a piece of, it's an artifact that was included. Yes, it does list that there are vast number of alarm issues, but there are also other, I know they're included as well. But it does, to your point, it does specify which ones were related to the alarm and which ones weren't.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi, I'm Seth Russell, attorney for Eric Burgendahl. First, I'd just like to start that I appreciate you guys' time today and hearing us.
Excuse me. Sorry. Again, could you state your name again for the record?
Yes, sorry. It's Seth Russell.
I need you guys to make sure your mouth is like on.
I'll get right up in there.
Thank you.
No problem. Uh, yeah, I thank you guys for being here today and taking the time. I also appreciate you being understanding, given the miscommunication on the timing of the, uh, public hearing. Uh, I did not receive the public hearing packet. I met with, uh, Tim, I think it was three weeks ago regarding, a meeting that we thought was the public hearing. We arrived, I talked with Tim, gave him my information. I did not get that packet though. Uh, so unfortunately I can't address everything that's in that packet. Further, you know, at that conversation with Tim, we discussed the grandfather issue that we've been going over for, since I've been Eric's attorney. Uh, I believe that goes back to 2019, 2020. My understanding was that this matter was settled at this point, that there was a, I believe there was a building permit at one point that did show that the enclosed porch was going to be used for a retail store. Um, and that through the various planning board meetings that we've attended and the, uh, subsequent conversations, this matter was put to rest and that it was determined that he was grandfather. If that had been an issue, it would have been something that would have been nice to know when we presented our application to the board for approval at that time. Um, and in our discussions with the town, so we could adequately prepare for this hearing today. Um, I just wanted to also address one of the statements that the police chief made about retail being sold in the same biz, uh, building. I think that's a misconception on the difference between adult use and medical building or medical use. It is true that an adult use and medical cannot be sold in the same building, but a medical, uh, retail store can be attached to the cultivation site. That's a pretty standard practice and also one of the requirements for dispensaries. As to the calls, like, again, I don't have the record. I have not been able to review them. Um, I do know that there was an ongoing dispute and uh, issue, we'll say with a disgruntled neighbor, neighbor, Mr. Bailey's, uh, biz. Sorry if I'm mispronouncing your name. I don't know what a number of calls that accounts for. I believe that a number of the complaints from him were the, the lights and potential sign, um, which I also believe have been addressed. More than, bigger to the point, uh, as far as I know, Eric has continuously worked with the town in transparency and talking with you guys, coming before you, before he does anything. He's worked hard to make sure that his shop is fully compliant, that he is working with the town and that you guys are in support of what he's doing. He takes hard effort in doing that. He has stopped certain endeavors that he wished to do because it was clear that it was not with the town wanted to do. Um, and I think that that's incredibly important in this kind of business and in any business relationship with the town. Thank you.
Thank you, Josh. And yeah, I will just go ahead and say, I, in, in my opinion, the issue is this business is located in our five and Table A clearly states that our retail business is not allowed in zone five without a major site time review. By a plenty more. So in my opinion, what you could be selling shoes or purses or whatever is a retail business in a residential area, which based on the way our organization is structured, that is not allowed without a major site time review step with plenty more. Uh, that is my opinion. That is how I will be voting on the retail store portion of this. I'm liking this issue. I don't know if anyone wants to add anything there.
If I may. My, my understanding is that the non-conforming use status also clarifies that any non-conforming use may continue to use in that area as a non-performing use, uh, including all operations, uh, which would include a business retail store. And at the time that he opened, I do not believe that that ordinance was at issue. Given sight the number of, uh, permits, the, uh, NOVs that he were initially issued and then followed up on and inspected. If that was an issue, he wouldn't be happy to go through a review. Uh, but I don't think that should be something that should prohibit him from getting his licensing and continuing his grandfathered use.
Council, does anyone have anything you would like to add or suggest? I think we should address this in two buckets. We should address the retail store piece. That's one item. Actually, I don't have any, um, medical care related, that's a separate motion.
They, they, they got it separated. And with the research, Tim has done. I've been sitting here for 10 years, so I've been sitting here for all of this, just about. To interview me, I haven't seen anything again in writing from anybody. I've been told it was grandfathered from Perry at one point with my president, the past town manager. But again, there's nothing in writing stating this was ever done. I don't believe the building permits that we have researched have given anything to retail businesses there. So let's see how we can authorize retail businesses in our five. So yeah, before I surrender, it's the, the, um, and for consideration of the application, please to the documentation.
Real ones.
We'll, we'll admit, um, documentation for the following, um, in the application, which, um, was submitted by I'm sorry, or doll.
Grandpa.
Sorry. There are a number of boxes that were not checked off. So in my mind, I see that that is an industry. Um, I see, I'm hearing arguments about the word grandfather. I'm not a master expert of our town ordinance. I have yet to find the word grandfather or brain father or grandmother or any sort of grandfather wording with definition in our ordinance. So that's because I too have been hearing that same word tossed around from former counselors and former people about this. And I think it just derailed them, right? But at the end of the day, what I get down to is, um, past planning board's approval of finding that. I didn't, I don't think we saw any of those things in the, uh, in the application. Maybe I missed it. Correct me if I'm wrong, Madam Chair. Correct me if I'm wrong, Madam Chair.
I don't believe that those were included. I don't find it the best or because it because this hasn't come before the language, so I wouldn't have done that. There's no finding that this doesn't exist. Yeah. Go find it.
Um, but yeah, that and. And that's where I said, I guess, um, and then I, and I'm not convinced that. Um, they hardly recall a grandfathering, quite frankly, I think is fantasy. I don't, I don't. I don't accept that until I see they thought that probably that I need to to grant problems because I didn't see it. I don't see now. I don't, and I'm not fully aware of the statement definition. That's sort of where I'm being far as. The whole thing.
Look down at anything else. I'm not ashamed to do it when something is over my head. And um the council, the planning board committees worked long and hard on our medical marijuana ordinance. And so. In my interpretation of do these businesses follow the guidelines of the ordinance? In some ways, yes, in some ways, no. When something is over my head, I prefer to deflect to experts, and I was actually wondering if we might be able to. Ask COVID officer Jenny McCabe. How she feels about just the compliance of if it's a possibility. I didn't know if that's about boundaries or if you would mind speaking, Jim.
If you are on what that you're. Oh, it's fine. Um, what is your specific question?
This is Jenny McCabe.
Oh, sorry, Jenny McCabe, code of course, not Sarah Tones, Heather Rick. What is your actual question?
Great. So, um, actually, it was, uh, Mr. Steinhammer that kind of picked my brain up. With the whole, um, on number one, medical cannabis registered caregiver. Again, the term grandfather has been thrown around, but then all made the comment and it says new cultivation on site. So with that being said, does it follow the guidelines of our ordinances? As I think it does.
Yeah, so the application, um, the application that you're looking at is actually set up in a way that everyone who owns any cultivation or. Uh, retail storefront is going to have to come in front of you to renew their license or grant their license. You're going to see quite a few of them because the ordinance is new and this is the new application. So. He's not really applying for a new cultivation on site. He's actually um ro- applying for a renewal license. And um he has to check off new. They all do as they come in front of you because it's a new licensing that they're going to have to um. Get filled out to be able to come here, like, to have approved by you.
Or think about our process being new.
That's right.
And actually, we're like applying for.
Yes, and um Mr. Burgendahl can speak to it better, but there is already cultivation that's being done on site now. Are you cultivating on site currently? So he already is doing that. Is that all you have for me? Okay, go ahead. Okay, so the cultivation part definitely is. So you can cultivate anywhere in our town. So um under a registered caregiver, absolutely, and um our attorney or. A Mr. Burgendahl's attorney can speak better on that. Obviously, I'm not an attorney. Um, what isn't allowed to use in the R five zone is retail portion of that. So what happens under retail, right? So. Uh, for a cultivation, my understanding of the law, correct me if I'm wrong, um, you can grow, um. You can grow in all stages. You can take your marijuana. Whatever the legal term for that is, and you can make it into edibles, ice cream, all the things. You on site can sell to your customers. Anything that you produce on site, make on site. What you can't sell on site is the paraphernalia that goes along with the rest of it. Which makes it a store. Does that make sense or do you need more? I'm going to do the best I can to explain it to you. Sorry, Jeff.
And Jenny and and I'm sorry, I just want to talk about that would not involve. A sign. Correct?
Correct, yeah, yep. So he can, so Mr. Burgendahl could go and he could deliver his product. Or people could come to his house. Um, it's an accessory use to the house, right? So people could come to his house and buy his product. But he can't have a sign in our zoning ordinance. He um can't have hours of operation that are listed, things like that. However. According to state law, he can sell his products that he grows or. You know, makes on site twenty-four seven.
Then I just refresh me because I I think I'm right to everything wrong. There is a square footage. It goes along with being given, very different also.
Yeah, that'd be in our ordinance. We wrote that. Yeah. We talked in depth about that. Yeah, definitely. And Mr. Burgendahl is aware of that square footage. Um, it depends on the, again, my understanding of the state law, correct me if I'm wrong. Um, is it depends on different stages of those plants, whether they're budding, flowering, whatever. If that's the same term, that doing the same thing, I don't really know, but that's, you know, how it goes.
Well, that's anything for Danny. Thank you so much for being.
Excellent, yep.
All right. Anyone else, counsel, any other discussion? I will, I'll go ahead and um make a motion first for a detailed portion of of um, then I'll make a motion to um approve the um. Okay, um, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the application um. For one sixty one Gunka Road for the um registered caregiver retail store application.
Second.
Second, so motion second on the table, um, just to note that I did the language there was to approve it. Um, so all those in favor, say aye, if not, say nay, Jeff?
No.
Done?
Right.
Let us go. No, motion does not pass. Um, zero four. And up next is second, um, license on the table is for the medical registered caregiver license, which we have as just of guts. Um, it's not something that we can, um, that this is something is allowed in the R five district. Um, and is does it is that, sorry, is required to follow our ordinance, etc. Or we have just discussed, etc. So, um, I need, do we want to discuss at all the medical caregiver licensing aspect of this? There's not. Much we can do here, am I?
There's not a lot of room for what the state allows. They just have to follow what we have for guidelines. Same, same.
So the two items on the table where the retail store aspect would be addressed, and then the second piece is um built into our ordinance is a requirement for um. Applicant for for folks to apply for an uh an application for a license for medical. Um, to to essentially be a medical cannabis registered caregiver, to be able to grow your. Grow your property and to be able to sell a variety of dummies to the claim.
Okay, again, just a clarification on the last motion. On the last motion, on the sale, I think it's to approve the license, the application. Um, was that for the new cultivation on site?
It goes for the retail.
So that was. Just going back on the agenda, that was the second item.
Oh, the item, yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to confirm that's what that vote was for.
Yeah, thank you. For the retail store, thank you. Um, so we're going a little bit on orders. The second ordinance present would be for a medical cannabis registered caregiver, new cultivation cultivation on site is what is listed on the agenda, but it's important to note. Not for new cultivation that's above the average already happening. This is new because our process is new and the applicant is looking for a license to comply with our ordinance.
I I have some problems.
Yeah.
I guess I'm sorry. Yeah, so this is, if I'm clear, this is for uh application for medical cannabis registered caregiver. Our ordinance in uh one forty six fifty seven, three. The. Section three. There's no license shall be granted by the licensing authority till the police chair, fire chief, and total enforcement officer. All the positive recommendations regarding the habit of its ability to comply with the session or any other patent for both town ordinance. Continue. Um, I I bring that up because I saw in here. Something that invited you basically saying. You got a knock box, thank you very much. Uh, enforcement, feel like there was some sort of general acceptance. Uh. I don't want this classified, characterized, but I thought, okay, that's good. But what we heard from the chief today, I didn't feel like that was a. Positive recommendation. So that were one of the questions that where are my day contacts right now?
Anyhow, funny, you know, I say. I just want to keep this moving. Uh, I just wanted to actually ask, uh, Councilman, again, you've you've mentioned that you noticed some um concerns with the actual application itself. That you felt it was incomplete. Was that for the retail store or was that for the new cultivation on site application? Now. Jenny, any further questions?
So the things that are not checked off on that application is because, again, they don't exist or we don't have them. So um some things on the checklist, can I just borrow your? So some of the things, if you don't have the packet that aren't checked off, is attaching planning board's approval and findings facts for each. It doesn't exist. Attaching a approved building permit and certificate of occupancy, if applicable, it doesn't exist in what he has now. He does have a building permit to. Rebuild that cultivation that he um had on site for a fire. Um, but this isn't. He did, there's no building permit or certificate of occupancy for the building that's being used right now. In the file, it doesn't mean it doesn't exist. It just means town hall doesn't have it. We would have it. Um, and then attach a letter of message of sewage disposal water supply for proposed site schedule of septic pumpkin, uh, sorry, not pumpkin. Pumping, it's almost fall, for five years must be included if the private system and um so Mr. Burgendahl had his septic pumped. Pumped down two years ago, so it is recommended with a septic his size that he has it pumped every two years, so he'll have to prove to the town. Before he gets a C O for his um new building that he had that septic pumped, so he can move on with that, just to clarify.
And. I. I don't want to take over your whole question. So you mentioned that it's it's not available. Right, but at first to be fair, right?
Yeah, the findings of fact for planning board approval doesn't exist, so it's not available.
And so, so the finding fact is not, and it's not available, it's never come before the planning board.
That's correct, but a cultivation doesn't need to, and that's where this application gets a little bit weird with all the different, um, so if you're not looking at the application, but you're in the crowd or you're at home. This covers um. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight different uses. Um, so there are things that are going to be on that checklist that are not applicable. The planning board approval is one of them because it's a medical registered cultivation. It was a retailer, it would be different. Just to give you a heads up, that's where we go with that.
Right, I mean.
Are you all set with me? Okay?
Yeah, I think. All right, so our next um course action is what do we want to do in the um medical caregiver uh. Medical cannabis registered caregiver new qualification on site license. Um, my take on this is that I think that this is something that um. Given the application, I think this is something that I think you can't, really, my opinion, I think that you can't approve. I do think that it's important that. Um, we just kind of keep an eye and make sure that um. It seems like one of the big challenges is the comings and goings of customers. Um, and so I think that that would be something that we would just want to perhaps work with um the applicant on to try to help that situation in the R five district. Okay, I'm going to want to make a motion to approve the medical cannabis registered caregiver new cultivation on site license um for one sixty one Gunka Road, nature's miracle L O D. Second, very motion and a second. All those, any? You look like you have something you might want to say, Jeff.
No, I'm trying. Perfect.
Okay, okay, the other one's on the table. Um, we're watching about Jeff.
I hear what I hear what you're saying about uh. Their difference. Being a second, that's what you're saying, or that's what I'm saying. I say. I just thought. Can you make me feel better about the way that I brought work and anybody else? Like, also make me feel better about the way that I brought up about this, maybe positive.
I mean, I think that.
I you guys don't have to answer that. I just have that one.
So, so that's our ordinance that we wrote. That's how we wrote it, correct? But the state of Maine drops our ordinance in fact, we really cannot say no. They do not have to come to us. To be a registered caregiver in the state of Maine because O P M or whatever the new term is now for that. Does not require a a registered caregiver that has a license from them to report to their town. So we could have a hundred registered caregivers in town right now. They don't have a license for us, and until something happens. We'll never know unless it's a complaint or something happens. We never know. State of Maine doesn't require them to tell us or will they give us their names? So, yes, our ordinance states that we need an okay with the fire chief and police chief and enforcement. But if we say no. It's going to get turned around back on us again because we can't say nothing. As far as where we cannot turn the statement, it turns on. Phil, could you answer that if you would, please?
I think I heard your question. Let me summarize. Are you asking if the town can deny a registered caregiver from operating? In the town of South Hurrican. So. The the. The statute does allow municipalities to regulate registered caregivers, as long as you do not limit the number. Of caregivers in your in your uh in your town. And you can have an ordinance. You do have an ordinance. Uh, but you cannot prohibit or limit the number of registered caregivers. So that's what the state has said. In this case, if you you know, you you should go through the um, you've gone through the ordinance, you've gone through the application. If. I, the one thing I would say is I agree that registered caregivers are allowed anywhere in the community. At this point, you have not zoned them per se, other than um. A different category, which is not issued this evening, which is a medical marijuana cultivation slash growing facility, which is a larger scale, three or more. Cultivate uh three or more registered caregivers. So if you're talking about a single registered caregiver and those are allowed as long as they get a license under this provision of the ordinance.
All right, I think that will stand our our question. Jeff, do you have? Thank you, Phil, for to be here and for helping us with that. All right, um, I think let's let's go ahead and um, I'll go ahead and make a vote. Well, we have a motion on the table. Let's go ahead and take a vote. Um, all those in favor of motion on the table and just a reminder of motion on the table to approve the medical cannabis registered caregiver new qualification on site license. Uh, that was submitted by Nature's Miracle L O D, that one sixty one Gunka Road. All those in favor, say aye, Jeff.
No.
Done?
Yes.
Well, I said.
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes three to one. All right, we'll move on to new business number four, amendment to the agreement with Wright Pierce. Uh, so Wright Pierce is the um company that is working on um, they have a revitalization plan with us and um. We entered in twenty grand within October of last year and essentially adjusted that um. There were some additional services that we are being charged for, and we kind of compromised a little bit with Wright Pierce, and they brought that dollar map down considerably. Um, I know there's a brief discussion about this topic in. Previous meetings, um, the last two in particular that I wasn't able to attend. Um, so anything else that I should add on this topic? Thank you all for coming. Anything on Wright Pierce?
No, I I, the only I'll tell you um. Is again, the amount of eight thousand that they asked their tour. I do know that. When I talked a couple weeks ago. I spoke to the acting chair of that committee, which is Melissa, like she asked me to call. Wright Pierce, tell them that they won't need it at the meeting and. Jeff Probel, who is the representative, often comes to the meeting on his own time, because he. He didn't want to. Not have communication with the committee, so he said if that was the sticking issue, that he would just come to the meeting on his own. I have to refer to Councilor Costello if he did, I I need.
Yes. Uh, he did attend the the last meeting, it was just, it was a concern of in discussion with Tim of where we still hadn't um voted on this agenda either of can we really. Expect somebody to show up when they don't know if they're going to get paid or not, and like I said, Tim reached out, or like Tim said, he reached out to uh Jeff. Um, to let him know that we would prefer that he didn't go, because we just didn't think it was fair, and he did say that um he was, he was going to be there himself. Um, he he did not bring um anybody else, but he did come.
Alright, um, well, it seems like um it's time, it would make sense to make a motion, so I'll make a motion to approve the additional expenditures for eight thousand dollars to come from the pumpkin town tent. Um, to go to Wright Pierce for the additional time and work done on the downtown revitalization plan.
Second.
Good motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor, say yes.
Um. In discussion of this, I just have um. I'm still not um on board with a lot of this extra money to them, and again, it just goes off principle with my business practices and. I just feel that um it just wasn't done about the right way of. However, they were told to come to the the extra meetings, they as a company accountability wise. They should have known that if they're asked to do extra work, then there's a change order that needs to be done, so they could be guaranteed to get compensated for the work. Um, that the extra work that they're expected to do. So that was never done, and I'm just a little, I'm just a little disappointed with this whole business practice, and I'm I'm just, I don't. I'm not on board with um giving them this increase of money.
Thank you. Alright, there's a motion on the table, go ahead and take a vote, um, all those in favor say aye, Jeff.
Aye.
Melissa?
No.
John?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes three to one. And now we can move on to new business number one, liquor license, the permit revealed for the links at Outlook.
Madam Chair, I move that we accept the liquor license renewal for the links at the Outlook Outlook course. Um, there have been no issues reported, and they have great fireworks and lights.
I mean, um, all those, are any discussion? All those in favor, say aye, Jeff.
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes four zero. And moving on to new business number two, schedule interviews with board. Sorry, yeah, there's three different um applications on that agenda sheet. So there is one for the renewal liquor license, there is one for the auxiliary license, and there's one for special reasons. Thank you, John? Okay, uh, okay, so what what we'll just, we'll scratch that and we'll just do three separate motions um for each individual one.
We're good, we got the liquor license, we're good.
Alright.
So Madam Chair, I move to approve the auxiliary license for the links at Outlook Outlook course, again, there have been no issues reported.
Second.
Thank you, motion for a second, all of the favors, say aye, Jeff. Yeah?
What is the auxiliary license?
It's a mobile service.
Alright, um, we have motion on the table, all those in favor, say aye, Jeff, alright, done. Melissa?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes four zero and.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the special review permit for the links at Outlook Outlook course. Um, waiting to be right for a. Public hearing um due past practice, and we're working on getting that fixed and tight. Second.
Thank you, we have motion for a second, any other discussions? All those in favor, say aye, Jeff, alright, Melissa?
Aye.
John? Aye, motion passes four zero. Alright, let's take care of all our business, town managers report, I'll turn over to Tim and Dan. Oh, I will not turn over to Tim and Dan, I mean, sorry, scratched that one off early. Um, we have several applicants for the various boards, um, here in Southburg, we've got. How many applicants? Four, we have four applicants, my suggestion is, I think if we could try to. Um, schedule an extended session ahead of our meeting, our next meeting, which will be August twenty-seven. Um, if we've got four, beginning, is everybody available, like five at five thirty? Uh, two weeks from today? That's a good time. Can you find that again, two weeks? Um, five thirty, if we decide to um. Try to stack them all um ahead of the meeting on the twenty-seventh, so Tim, if you could reach out to each of the individual candidates, um, see if they can come in sometime in that five thirty to six thirty window, and if not, we can we can find another time and be flexible with them. Thank you, um, okay, so I'll go ahead and make a motion to schedule those interviews, um, but with the four candidates, which I'll read off the lead currently, um. We have Glenn Bell with Historic District Commission, James Flinburn historic district committee, Daniel Maxton with the Conservation Commission, and Stan Plisdrum for Historic District Committee. Those are the four applicants that were looking to interview on the twenty-seventh. I made a motion, did I? Yeah.
Uh, yes, I, I was just thinking of the application, maybe we have an issue, we can discuss it, very interesting.
Yeah, um, we have a motion on the table, all those in favor of scheduling interviews for the twenty-seventh, say aye, Jeff. Alright, done.
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye. Aye, motion passes four zero, um, Tim, tell us now, we're having to do that, thank you, Josh. Alright, now.
Well, for the highway demand, they break in dinner road and gate Black Swan Drive. A wide road field called the sack to the removing the town sidewalk that was from a link. So I don't want to try to even been done, um, the new safety stripe from the crosswalk, which was a suggestion from one of the citizens that we followed up on. I think that they're done, we're being done, um, I've heard a lot of positive comments about, so it seems to be a good idea. Um, they cleaned up the brush from around Paul Street parking lot, and they ground the stumps out of the town hall. Now, we'll concede that, police department had been three arrests, four accidents, a hundred fifty-three traffic stops. Um, they did the national layout last Tuesday, was a huge success and well attended with over five hundred people. Like to thank the police department for putting it on, sponsoring it, the police chief for their paid inside work. Wendy Morrison, who organized both and the whole event, um, Bridget, the fire department's been helping out. And all the other organizations that participated, and I can't list them all, the recti department, Nikki. Um, the fire department had a sa- safety smoke trailer, and this was the first time we've done it in this town, it was organized by Chief Ruger and Wendy Morrison, it was a huge success, so a lot follows our comments back. Um, they've already started working on next year and expanding it next year, so. Good job to them, and we certainly good community up. Fire department has had nineteen calls in the last three weeks, two hundred and seventy-three here to date. On July nine, uh, July twenty-ninth, Lieutenant Blom and Chief Hamel traveled to gas manufacturing in Austin, Wisconsin for pre-construction. Heating and approved rates for the new fire truck, and they spent going out, long days reviewing virtually every aspect of the new truck in Jordan, pretty large. Gas man- manufacturing locations in Austin, Wisconsin. Um, this is the final design, what's been submitted. So this, this is the final drawing, so then what happened from here is they now have given it a production date number, which means it will. Go into production in early September, and they're hoping to have it built and delivered to us sometime late February or early March. The truck that we we bought, thanks to the citizens and the support from the council, with an early purchase, we paid eight hundred and twenty-six thousand for this. In twenty twenty-two, it's taken us long to get it built. While they were out there, Nick asked them today, if we ordered that truck today, this is exactly what you're seeing in front of you, they said that is that truck to build today would be one point four million.
Sorry, eight hundred? Eight hundred?
We paid eight hundred and twenty-six thousand and twenty-two, because we did a pre-order, pre-early contract, instead of waiting till now. To get it and then do the contract on the very end. Today, it's valued at one point four million, that would have been the cost if we bought it today. So Nick and Chief Rusal and Wendy did a great job, having the foresight to plan ahead and order ahead, saved us four or five hundred thousand dollars. Uh, Thorntons had ten building permits, four planning permits, twenty-six inspections, one violation. Seacoast Christian School gym is down, then process removing concrete this week, waiting on a fire marshal's approval. They have construction plans, which could be a total. Under planning, code division, the people who do the blue book, this blue book right here, which is um. General Co-Publishing Company, they have provided us a contract, they did it last year. Polish maker reviewed the contract, it's for the whole one, it's not just the land use limit. They're gonna go through and make sure every chapter is confirmed with state law, state code, and then we'll have the chance to add in our add-ons from there with both land use. And we have got decided to work on a personnel policy, so finally, we're going to get our land use. All that stuff updated, and our personnel policy is all updated to new standard. Well, that'll be exciting, that was put into by, that was by the true group. And then they decided when a man enough to sample states was denied, the back planning has been tabled, tabled into the reform. Then transportation waste hauling con, I attended a negotiation waste hauling contract. Heating at North Berwick with the Ammonad Negotiating Committee, we have, we only had three vendors, waste management, the somewhat equal name. Um, they have, we reviewed all their proposals and they've come up with alternate proposals to, that we have sent back, Wayne, Tom Andrew. North Berwick sent them back this week, and now we just wait to see where we're going, uh, the. I I guess the the news that I'll report, the stumbling block is all want to give us five year contract. We don't want to buy their contract, because that doesn't benefit us, we want to point their contract. The longer the better, the better we can set the rates, the better we can plan for it. Nobody is giving us a five year contract, because right now, um, the only landfill site in the state of Maine open. Is running out of this permit in five years, the state E P has probably given to sell up for anybody else. Get a new location or an extension of that, so essentially, right now, when everybody's on hold, waiting to find out what we're gonna do in five years, they don't. Have wasted holes. So we're kind of trying to negotiate concept that, okay, what if we sign in five years, but if it goes through and passes. And we can embed them to grow for the fifteen years or something like that. So that's kind of where negotiations are left, we send three proposals back, now they'll count it back, and then we'll go back and redo it. Um, we back over to the. Transport station walks, through the type of seals in the rear arm, and we had to order the tops and public works we did that last week, and that's been put back. Why?
At the library, for the month of July, there was two thousand six hundred and fifty-four visitors, two thousand seven hundred and fourteen items were checked out, thirty-eight items for lunch from other libraries, even though the state man service has been suspended. These have been working with other libraries in the local community to get the people what they asked for. Two items have been lent out, twenty-eight programs held, total attendance of three hundred and sixty-seven people. And there has been a hundred and thirteen. Computers by us, much for the town employee will be Tuesday, uh, the twentieth, with Mary, the town council chair, that will be in new time, that will be considered provided for anyone has any questions for her. Economic development, we did the update on the comprehensive plan, downtown renovation, we group and do their final recommendations last Monday on the fifth, and then pretty final touches on the document, which will be sent to the town council in the presentation to Holland. Eastern Trail feasibility study, the proposed segment location for the eastern trail from downtown Runford to the intersection of Wichita ninety-one and two thirty-six has been presented in the draft board. Recreation summer camp has wrapped up on August second, they had great summer breaks out and wonderful group of kids already planning for next year. The challenge soccer camp took place last week, there was about seventy seventy kids who attended. The youth soccer program kicks off on the first day of September, starting to publicize for all of their different fall programming, and there'll be a new dance class in collaboration with Bar Academy this year, so they're excited about that. The soccer field will be closing this Friday, August sixteenth, for the next two weeks to do some work in the fields and get the new top dressed. Seniors are heading to Interlake Theater on Wednesday, tomorrow, to see the million dollar quartet, and their next luncheon is on August twenty-first. As I think the townwide reevaluation K R T is now working along Burke Woods Road, the next batch of those cars will be coming out this week for Wichita and Earl's Road areas. Cartographic Associates is working on the April first map changes and the assessing um department, and we hope those will be online shortly. And my department, I had twelve business meetings, thirty-five meetings in the last three weeks, also spending on vacation last. A test run of the tax bill data was such a good venture last week, and everything has been looking good, so we will move forward with that tomorrow, um, now that we have the tax mill rate set, that will go to the front tomorrow. We will approve those, and we will go out the week of August nineteenth. FEMA update, the January flooding storm has totaled about four hundred and twenty thousand dollars, that work is now all complete. The April snowstorm is about eighty thousand dollars, the only pending repair is the electrical work at Powderhouse Hill. Jay Ready Mark and I will be needing FEMA for an inspection tomorrow morning on the top of the Powderhouse Hill. They have to replace the line all the way from the top, all the way to the bottom, they got pulled out of that top engine room during one of the storms, the tree fell on them, temporarily fixed it, but now it needs to be permanently repaired. For my vacation, I created the spreadsheets that you saw with all the rates, um, Tim and I worked together on that. I am scheduling interviews for both the clerk's office and the economic planning position that we have open, and I continue to work on year-end coming for our audit that will be in September.
Um, working on economic, my my office, um, working on economic development, banner news. We met in the middle of the citizen, received complaint about a business in a residential zone. The Sore District will be renting the office up here that they had in the years, um, their building has been sold, they got evicted, they came and asked if they could. Come back, I don't know why they were kicked out by the previous town manager, but I said, if you want to pay at the office, if you want to renovate the office yourself. That, which was a storage problem, clerk who drew stuff up and did a storage problem. They got, yeah, I say a hundred fifty dollars a month. The only one contacted by the U S Navy, they wanted to know if they would be a host community. For a submarine that is coming into dock in the fall, and um, so they called, we were recommended by Malcolm Kenny. And basically what it is, submarine is coming in for a while, it'll be here for three years, and most of them are not from around here, so they're, they look for community to adopt them, so to speak. And when that submarine will do is they'll come out, crew will come out for two years, they'll work with the community, they'll provide us like, they'll be involved, they work at the, anything, any. Strawberry Festival, the uh. Holiday shop, um. Veterans Day, they'll speak, they'll just get involved in the community, kind of learn the community, know the community, be adopted, just so they don't stay. At the yard for two years and not have any place to go, anything to do, we'll give them projects, they kind of get adopted, and we get to know them. The ship of the USS Washington will be in the fall, what would happen, they would come and meet with you here, present their command staff, and come here. We would present them a little certificate, welcoming them, and it's a big community thing, and it's a, we'll, they'll be here for two years, they clean up cemetery, they'll help with acts of recreation, they'll go over and help serve. Um, seniors, they'll do whatever we ask of them for two years. Um seniors, they'll do whatever we ask of them for two years, they just offer their cultural communities so they can. Get involved and be involved. So I thought it was a great opportunity for us to welcome a submarine crew here and. Become a positive ally for them and get to know them and welcome them to our town. All I know.
Now. Yeah, so go ahead, Brian. When does that start? When does the submarine start?
There, you're supposed to be in dock sometime in late September and they said it'd take a long month, so probably around the end of October or first of November.
Making the ball chip the soup supper first Wednesday in November.
Yeah, so anything, so one of the things is, you know, like in the screen lineup of the trails, it'll certainly help with that, the the liaison and Doc maybe said that, you know. They just, they just want to participate in the world. So John works, do you add anything you can add and you think the comments?
Uh no, it's a great, it's a great vote, I got a team now working on it right now in Washington, I mean, uh in Virginia, they're they're a good vote and it's been. A thing in the community, it's been a host thing, York's done it, Kerry's done it, Fort has done it, they usually reach out, um I'm trying to remember the last vote that reached out here, like it was by line, so. You remember?
I I don't and I'm not really involved with that portion, but I'm surprised we haven't been a host community. I'm maybe we have.
I think we have, I think it was the Albuquerque back twenty years ago, but yeah, it's it's great effort, yeah, good thing.
I'm excited, I'm excited about that, I know based on starting from the council. Team the employees and citizens that will be very welcoming to this, using people, the liaison was saying back to that, he said a lot of these, a lot of the sales are not from northeast, they're from, you know. Southwest and so forth, so they don't have family here, they don't have any, so I think it'll be, we we have the strawberry festival, we have the holiday stuff. Um you know, we just, we do a bunch of stuff and. They just want to be involved, so I think we welcome them and invite them to our community, show them how friendly we can be and.
We should learn school district now about this as well.
Yeah.
Their community opportunities with the school.
Yeah, they'll leave presentations of the school, they'll do all kinds of stuff, they'll help them, whatever, any kind of civic event, they they can help that, they will, they're willing to help, they want to help. And that's what they do with them, them it runs out in about a year and a half in the program for them, they're ready to back on the ship, it's open, but I just thought it'd be a great opportunity, they're often nice and yes.
Yeah, definitely. Well, thank you.
Oh, yeah.
Alright, I'll leave you house for our tenants, John.
Uh public service announcement, the scum's around the hoop, so if you have dogs, make sure you have ferroxy, uh baking soda and non-dish, so in your house because it works fantastic, you get the smell off.
Thank you.
So I got.
That.
No, I just um. I don't have.
Okay.
Actually, Jeff does have, so he he asked me a question by email, we have that answer, I had to clerk through the research and answer, Jeff, can you bring that, can you mention that so we can answer your question for you? It was about dogs, yeah, uh so I had just, I had asked about our.
Uh municipal. Rules and regulations in regards to about dogs um. At town hall and a couple of our add-ons municipal properties, just um. During the election, during elections especially. So I had uh clerk call Dustin to get that answer, so Matt, clerk, please.
Um so there are no specific rules around dogs um being at the hold, um it follows municipal. Um rules where they would have to be leashed. Um and if they are to be wearing like vest or anything like that, or you know, there's pins on the leash or anything of that sort, they fall under. The same rules that any individual would fall under with solicitation, so the dog cannot be wearing go hide in or go trump or anything like that. But they are welcome as long as they're leashed.
Great to know. Melissa. Okay, um a good thing I have, it does pertain also to election day, I just want to let everybody know that absentee ballots requests are now available, if you would like to vote absentee, um that request is available, doesn't mean the ballot is available, but you can at least submit it. Um also, town staff are going to be meeting monthly, um each and now in the election to ensure a safe, smooth and hopefully enjoyable voting experience for folks here. Um and we are still in need of poll workers, yes, Tyne, um so if anyone is interested in working the polls on November fifth, um you can reach out to our town clerk, Tyne, polls will be open from November, on November fifth, from eight to eight P M, eight A M to eight P M, sorry. Start making a plan to vote, ask your friends, family, neighbors, what their plan is to vote, voting this year is going to be so, so incredibly important, make sure everything you know is going to vote. And I'm also a humongous fan of the new crosswalks, so, thank you, that's all I have, John, my adjournance.
It's been bad, you're a goofy jerk.
Thank you, second, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Thanks, John, thank you for coming, everyone.